Yeah.
Any bugs you scratch on any item on the gent.
Excuse me.
Your honor.
There's two places. There's a special and one regular.
And I'm gonna get Alice to come to me someday. A little girl, her daddy, that's her best friend, I said I told girl be deranged forever.
Well, I think I saw or met your, with Donnie's grandbabies, so your brother's grandson and granddaughter over the fire station.
They can't lose their pals, isn't it?
They're so cute.
They are cute.
They're so adorable.
I don't disagree with that.
I see where there might be a little bit of a hand still a lot of times, but they're so cute.
They were not so happy about foster kids coming in.
I wondered. I didn't go to mom's Sunday.
She, she didn't want to leave mom. But we were, I took them along and she was pretty, she was one, she kept wanting, even when I was there, she wanted me to go into her room and play with her in her room by herself.
Yeah, by herself.
And then when my mom got there, my sister got there, she went down and did the same. My mom's like, if you wanna come stay the night, or at least come with me.
Yeah.
So she stayed, she stayed last night at my parents' house.
That's what, that's what mom said.
Yeah, my dad's off today, so you can either take her home this morning or hang out with her most of the day.
They, Zaden went out there to mom's to eat and they just sang two places, there's a special and there's a regular, Jay.
Do what?
There's a special and a regular.
Oh.
Um, Jessica said that Brayden brought Zaden out. And Jessica said that he didn't wanna go back.
Yeah, he didn't even, he saw my parents, when my mom pulled up, they pulled back up, and he was like, he didn't even come say hi to my mom, 'cause I think he'd, I need to go back. They don't, I don't think you ever mind a little baby, it's the other one.
Yeah.
Kids really don't like to share.
Yeah.
Especially when it's coming from your mother. She definitely wouldn't wanna share her mom.
Yeah.
That little girl gets some words, I think. I think she's related to Katrina. Like, look at her face, wants a little boggart, oh.
She gave me a look too.
I said, yeah, you tell her to give you the look, and, oh, she is a mean.
She, oh, she gives you a look, yeah.
They wanted to go to the park, it was Thursday, and it was real windy, and I was cooking smoked horns, too, down there, and they're both like, we wanna go to the park, we wanna go to the park. Donnie sat there and talked to me for a while about different things, about the fire station, and they're like, you taking him to the park? I'm like, I take him to the park, but it's windy out there, he's like, oh, they don't care.
They don't care, no.
Told him I'd bring pizza, and he was like, sure, the trick, he was like, hey, we need two gallons of whole milk. Hey, we need diapers.
Would you like me to have your whole, you know, grocery list?
And then my mom still brought stuff. I'm like, why didn't you just text mom? She's got more money than I do. She wanted to clean me up first.
It's all turning a mood there.
And Trish was like, I'm sure you'll pay me back. You'll pay, you'll pay me back.
You do not have to.
Tell them about Joe and Urban and the diapers needed, the story.
They was asking what all they needed out there, and so they said that they needed diapers, and they were supposed to go, and so they picked up diapers themselves, and so then they went by, before they left, even another people called and said they had some, what'd they say, it was five hundred?
Five hundred diapers?
Five hundred packages of diapers? No, that they was picking up to go take out.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, you did you?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it's not corrected here.
But I, I did check on the, the name on it.
Yes, no. R-E.
R-E, E-N-T-Y-R-E.
Yeah, I knew that wasn't right, but I couldn't think of how to spell it.
But that's the only chip that you got, and that's buggy, by the serial number and everything, what makes you, so.
I'm just wondering whether they stacked five hundred di- five hundred diapers.
In a pickup.
As a pickup, yeah.
I pulled up, very cheerful. I went somewhere, you hide and bought a box of, these donuts, and pick them up there.
So I asked her if it was on northeast side either, southeast, she said southeast, I said, okay.
So I pulled up, I walked inside, I was like, I was inside for a little bit, and it was like, Kinsley, I gotta warn you.
Emotional, this is the way of things.
She was so excited.
I'm sorry, who did what?
Stan and Jay.
Thank you.
Give me a little water, Peggy.
Not too bad, I said.
You know, everybody wants to bring water, but everybody's got water, you know, I mean, but I didn't think about diapers. After the buy, sorry, I might be, I, you know.
That's what, you know, a few weeks ago, we did a story about what all the time around, you need, people don't realize, like, much of washer fluid?
Yeah.
Eye drops and that kind of stuff.
Uh-huh, yeah, you know, I read that.
Everybody brings water in Gatorade, but.
Yeah, but we got stacks and stacks of water in Gatorade.
That's what Cherokee has a guy that'll donate every time they get loads, all they do is call him and he brings a pallet, he'll provide a pallet of water.
The worst thing, well, not worse than, uh, Texas Roadhouse bought a bunch of, I guess, out of the city, fed the guy, our guys are already back home, Texas Roadhouse.
I know at least one AEC crew's out there still.
There'll be a bug shot out there.
Yeah, I heard Grand County at five o'clock this morning on the radio, they sent a task force at five this morning again.
Where they sent it to?
I don't know, they sent it, that was, Grand County did. In fact, it was three minutes after five when I looked at my watch, and I heard, uh, heard Nash and Holly, and there's some others, and Static was on the radio, and I didn't, I heard them tell how many, but I don't know where from. Whether it was Waukeeta or Manch, I don't know.
Concrete, yellow, yellow.
Concrete, whatever, I don't know what.
Kind of like how Rockland County does theirs.
Oh, in numbers.
They kinda have two teams, yeah.
Yeah, that works great.
If you have that many people.
Yeah, in the re- in, yeah. I saw that, I talked to Mike a couple times on Thursday, 'cause he was helping Matt, Lon Bar, facilitate stuff, and so he was helping, and so I talked to him.
I just like watching videos, big plank coming, man, on Kenton scooping out water.
That was cool, wasn't it?
With, I thought I'd drive down there watching.
Yeah, they couldn't scoop those, probably it was too low, so they had to.
They were helping.
Or some tidal halibut.
Yeah, yeah, it's right up there.
Right up there.
What they said, I don't.
Yeah, 'cause the river flows into it, the river goes around north side.
The best picture I saw, Hannah Riggs, she got a picture, yeah, wind, wind towers out there, it burnt the blaze off that, melted the blaze off that, where your wind tower, yeah.
Really?
Picture, just got the hub sticking out with little pieces.
Really?
And they said them flames come up that canyon and get those trees, and went straight like that, melting. My God, them, them are up there, they're hard.
They're five hundred feet tall, top the blade.
Yeah.
But you know, when it starts melting, it's gonna keep on melting.
Good God.
And when that would get, well, even if they got the break, I'm sure the waves don't hold it around there, yeah.
That plane's had to be.
That one picture, the fire and the green, it's like a robot. I probably got that, that's pretty neat. Well, I never thought, yeah. I mean, I've been to Kent, something I would've thought of here, that's pretty neat, before you got there.
If he hadn't a dough in that tank he found there, he'd, he'd have died for sure. And they weren't hunting, they were just out scouting for turkey.
Shouldn't have been around there that close.
No.
I'd say if he waited around a little while, he might have found one already.
Well, they won't, he just got, Matthew's got his arm burnt by a flashback.
You probably turned that into a fever cure.
Caught today, lighting up cattle fire. I wonder, uh, if they take his building, they'll probably, they'll still have to pay a hundred dollars for it, you know, that clinic. Went out with a plan.
We run it in, in last year. Isn't it the last, last mini of the month, we open the fairgrounds bid?
Yeah, I don't know what.
Do this again.
It'll be interesting, what I'm gonna call me first.
I haven't done any good.
Guys ain't bids on anything else?
Nope.
That's true, that's true, you gotta try.
That's what he cost it, for one firefighter for bunker gear, right there. That's not including the helmet or the boots.
That's, that's off state contract too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
You can't believe it, cost three thousand dollars for that pair of pants and a jacket, and a jacket, and now they're including the, the nomads, but, but that doesn't include the helmet or the boots.
Well, this does.
Does it?
Twenty-two fifty, boots are T ninety-five, gloves are six-seven.
Okay, well, the original quote that you get from them, and, and see, they're on sale right now. It's free grand to outfit a firefighter.
Yeah, and that's like, we were talking about, a lot of counties down south, southwest of us don't have the same resources.
The resources we have, no.
No.
Sales taxes.
We didn't have, yeah, we didn't have them for a long time.
That's what, so we got blessed when they put it on running time for us to be getting a hundred thousand.
They exert their resources down there, fighting large scale fires like they, they happen, and.
Now, major counties got stacks they put on a year or so, going there to cap them.
And they're just now starting to.
Right, and they're getting plenty of oil and stuff down there, too.
Yeah.
It's great, Tressa's told me a lot about it, and you can see they're trying to build those.
She's trying, she might not be, yeah, that's what I heard.
Why?
She's running for treasurer.
Is she?
Is she?
County clerk's first deputy filed also, she'll be hard to beat.
Which, who's the first, who's the first deputy?
Luann.
I don't know what Luann's last name was again.
County clerk.
Lynn?
Luann.
Luann.
The county clerk's first deputy.
Oh, okay, he's running for. Yeah, well, I guess with Tressa, she has it, I guess she knows, she's still got her, she's still got her EM, no, or whatever.
Was Tressa running for?
Treasurer.
Then her mom, is that her, her mom's position?
Tressa's mom?
I don't know.
She told me that it was her mom doing, was treasurer before.
Oh, this, apparently it was her hire.
Possibly, I'm not sure.
I don't know, I haven't even, she didn't say anything to me, I saw her last week and talked to her.
County clerk though, that's the one who always comes to, oh.
Her first deputy.
That's what I thought she was running for. I was just, the treasurer, current water, or the one.
County clerk, yeah.
No, no, treasurer. There'll be a huge hole from Kathy's, from Kathy's office to fill the room.
Yeah, Kathy, Kathy's, I knew I knew her name. Wondering what she's gonna do, during the summer, 'cause she was always over the pit for races. I never even go over, talk to her, but.
County clerk was, rated them?
Mm-hmm. She worked something over there. She said, I went to race too, I said, can see ya, 'cause I'm over at the pits, she'll do something, something over there.
I didn't know that.
This is what you told me yesterday, I think. Dewey County, you see all theirs, they had to change, well, they had to, since they evacuated to Logan, they shut down the courthouse.
Yeah, Tressa was over there when they did that, too.
So they had to change all the filing, I think you can still call it today and tomorrow.
Oh, yeah?
They had to change all, they moved it to, to Airview, to Major County, so, but.
You gotta do something.
Yeah, you gotta do something, but I think they, I thought I saw that they were gonna open it up today, tomorrow for filing.
A lot of devastation down there, I feel for Lisa and all them down there.
It's gonna be a long cleanup process.
Yeah, it was very disheartening talking to her.
The rain comes, but the grass will grow pretty, pretty quick.
It'll really be pretty, bro.
It's a long time building fence.
Yeah. A former math teacher reminds me, his mom passed away like a hundred and thirty days ago, and then they just lost her house in the fire.
Oh, my.
And he said that was pretty, pretty trying for him.
What did it for?
His mom just passed away like, I don't know, six months ago or so, but just lit in this fire, burned up her house. I don't know how much they got, I don't know how much they were able to salvage out of it.
I don't know.
Probably not much, they're not right there.
No, probably not.
The little service inmate, he kidding Kay, but being house in jail. Them kidding Kay's a car, and he's just, he's out of trouble, can't make. I'd rather be drunk or whatever. Make a thirteen, please, right there.
I don't have, uh, the Shinas or Thomas.
You got everybody else's own?
Mm-hmm. I did all the insurance ones and the, insurance ones and retirement ones and all the other ones.
What is the date?
Uh, sixty, I'm trying to make it look fifteen, but it's a sixty, yeah.
Hello, one time I didn't look. Someday it's gonna be a lie, you know what?
Mine's about that way, too, I'm seeing my L, it's a.
Less than ridder was just like this, I mean, it was like an art machine, you know, going off.
Chair, I have to tell you the two, um, sixty, um, to remind Ashley, I need her time before they leave Thursday, this will, last day of the month, so on Monday, so I'll have to do it next Sunday.
You don't have to worry about our, hey, they, ninety percent of them, ma'am, you come down with one of them. He finally did say hi last Thursday. It just, doesn't mean just, you know, that, you did it two hours ago, now you, you wanna call and complain?
Yeah.
You know, it's a pretty simple deal there.
Like it.
Is it? Yeah.
It's like they didn't order them, like, to try.
Going ahead, some.
Those are fairgrounds.
What?
Those are fairgrounds, out here in the air.
Better get back with it then.
Those are fairgrounds.
I just took a little break there.
No problem.
They asked Zaden, they had Nicole's birthday cake, and they had put a peacock on it, and so Jessica was trying to tell him it was a peacock, and I don't remember how she said he was saying it, but it wasn't a peacock. Then he was like, anybody cut the peacock, they had to cut it.
That was a pretty good night, I'm saying.
Cause she had to show him on Google what a peacock was.
Oh, yeah, he never even came to the house when we were there, and I, I got ready to get ready to come back to Cherokee, but I took him to donate over there, and he was just playing on Brad's bench, playing on the phone. Like, hey, hey, Zaden, Zaden, like, didn't have that to say, he's not even looking at us.
He probably thought he was your, your, his daddy, when they make you come home.
Like, hey, you wanna donate?
Yeah.
But he didn't donate.
My mom on Sunday used to get them pop, because their mama doesn't let them have pop, but nobody overrules aunt, our great aunt, so I always hit them pop, just a little bit of cup of pop.
They get, they get pop all the time when they come to grandma's.
Yeah.
She let him have pop?
I think she just had to just argue with me.
My mom introduced, my mom introduced Zaden root beer.
I can't lose, everybody else is gonna give him it, so.
Exactly. I need to be the good one for something.
Yeah, I'm not big on soda either.
They're not gonna drink that much, I'm just trying to earn their love.
I am, I am.
They ain't really, I think they even wanna pop if you give them Sunny D.
Yeah.
But you can't give them.
He didn't, he didn't want Sunny D, 'cause, yeah, he sometimes will want Sunny D, but, but last Sunday, mom had both, and he, no, he wanted pop, I think it was just 'cause his sister wanted pop.
If you, you have like milk or something, and then he drinks it for a while, and he puts it back in the fridge, and then he pulls back, and he won't drink it.
Or drink again?
Because it's old.
Oh, old, that's his mama, that's his mama, and, you know.
Like, it's been in the fridge, like, mom gave him chocolate milk one night, and then it was, and then so, he didn't drink it, also he put it in the fridge, and then pulled it back out the next day, he's like, it's old. Dumped it out and gave him fresh.
That's his mama.
I don't know what it is, but I'm that way, it's standing glass. You're right, it's not the old stuff, I said, the fridge, right? Ah, yes, we did, yeah, okay. Radar certification training classes, like.
They had a little gig up, a free go in their bathroom, like, for bathroom, and they were in there, and Kelly just wanted to go on it, so I come back over. She just wants to get away.
Yeah. Jessica thought, like, she just had them on the weekends, but mom says she has them all the time, do they have them all the time?
I don't know, they weren't sure how long they'll have them, but it'll, yeah.
It'll be all the time until?
Yeah. Will they take them somewhere else? Yeah, I'm sure they'll try to find, 'cause I think it's a little weird.
I'm sure they'll find a method.
Yeah.
Well, actually, my brother, my brother does foster care, I have one of them, surprised that he didn't do it all by.
He didn't go, yeah.
I was wondering if they had foster kids all of a sudden.
Both of my brothers have foster kids.
Or just 'cause they were six month and eighteen month?
Yeah, a year and a half.
Try for two out of three.
Local, local kids? There's no town.
But you go, no point.
Didn't sound like he knew a lot about the circumstances, man.
Sorry, Toby. I gotta quit leaning on the job here, doing my job.
Just put the, keep your elbows off the table?
Yeah.
Or you got it, that's what you're, you're.
Give me a shovel.
So what's that, what's that saying?
Something to lean on.
Just lean on Jay.
Abel, Abel's drawing, Abel, get your, get your elbows off the table.
There you go. Acting like I was eating.
I registered that, why they thought that was rude to have your elbows on the table.
Take some space you could do. Make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
All right. Blankets.
Blankets.
Me, too.
I'm sure.
The bottom group, Jay, you need to sign, Toby, or. And that was our sheriff and.
Okay, which, which do I need, which one?
Uh, Jay can sign, I'm on bottom.
There are some.
District one and district two. District one and district two.
So Jay signs this one?
Um, yeah.
Okay, now who signs this one?
Ms. Goodenham.
Does that mean?
Yeah, uh, either you, either you or him.
Oh, good sign of them. What about these?
Those are sheriff, nope, those are signs of, I'm not, that one's a red, it's a man first.
It's already signed.
It's already signed, we gotta refer to the meeting.
Correct, have fun. Ain't that funny, gone for us.
Again.
Yeah, I'm good, we're good, we're covered.
Mine's gonna disappear pretty fast, 'cause my secretary's daughter comes, gone, gone.
Do you, have you heard about Donna Dischucks?
No. Ronnie Mickelson, she's on sixty years old, ain't she? No, Ronnie, she's a little bit mad. 'Cause Bart is the same class as Joey, he's not, he got held back or not, I think he did, that's six years older than me, so he wasn't sixty-seven, right?
I don't remember the age that he turned us to.
I don't know. I knew she wasn't good. From the post they put on. Or maybe she got that boy, I don't think it, I know, but it'll be orange all the time, always you, you understand? Where does she live, do you know?
I don't know where, I know Laura lives over there, just straight down the street from Donna and them, but I don't know where Baby lives.
I thought she lived, I don't, you know, a kid goes to a fair, but I, he has, I don't know where she lives. She's done good for herself.
Yeah, she has, she's so pretty.
Maybe I made herself, yeah. You never know, 'cause there are real mechanics, there's kids running everywhere sometimes, you don't know whose kids they are, 'cause they'll be, it's all once in spring or so. I guess they're getting business.
I'm moving, we set the blankets.
Hot circulate.
All the way.
All right.
Roadcar, we can, we can.
See, you look how much.
I named those.
I guess a woman died in her vehicle near a ceiling, too, in the fire.
You didn't hear about that?
I hadn't, I read it now on their, the state update.
The investigation is almost, I have.
She is nuts.
Well, this morning I talked to the sheriff, what happened was, she pulled up there to help out with that fire down there, help the Navy there or something, there's a tree or a log across the road, she tried to back around, and she didn't get backed around, the smoke got over there, and that's what they're, that's what they told me their last.
They're saying that, that, you know, the people are already gone, they'd already evacuated.
Yeah, they'd already, supposedly gotten out there, and she was going in to make sure, or help them, or something, and that's what happened.
I just sort of wonder what they know about, they think a part of it's been intentionally set, way.
What, what intentionally set, do you?
Somebody arsonist. Yeah.
Yeah, they, the one out on, on Kyle Headway, there's, yeah, can be after.
Oh, that one, oh, yeah, I think it was from there.
I'm talking about out there.
Yeah. What, what those fires started from?
The, the rave, I'm gonna call Rayo.
Rayo, whatever.
What happened to you, the guy last week when the burn van wasn't on, burnt, and he decided to go out in the black and light some trees, that was already burnt out there in the big fire by Tolu and Sealy, and he lit them, and they were still smoldering, and part of that's what set the fire.
Why does do they?
He actually set the initial fire when the burn van was off.
Was off.
And it was back on then, but, but it was still smoldering from the other one.
Aren't they in a governor's burn van with Dewey County, or are they not part of that governor's?
Uh, some of those counties were exempt from it down in there, and I haven't looked to see which, well, I knew we were, we were exempt off of it.
Checks out here already.
Kind of figured that she'd come back and put us all in another.
That's for two, that's for both of them.
That's what Tressa and I were talking about yesterday, 'cause she sent an email to Drew Dale.
No, the, the check is for both of them.
She actually has something to do with that.
That guy come in, I told him, if he wasn't from my area, to get out of here, and he went away. I was here when that guy come in.
Who? Oh, hey, no, she told it back, I ain't had no money for a while. Don't be a long cat dog.
That's, yeah, that's that blanket that you.
We know you're sorry.
They just got stuck together on those staples.
Right.
I just think there needs to be something.
But there one out here, they got a description of a vehicle.
Is that on the hay bale fire?
On the hay bale fire yesterday afternoon, but they didn't get a license tag, but, but they run it through now, and they found out the guy was.
I made a motion.
Second.
Already got it.
All favor.
Well, that's how you do it.
Aye.
I made, I made, he made the motion, stand second.
Yeah, I was trying to stop in the middle of my.
Up in Kansas, I can't think of the town now, Kansas, it's registered too, and they got a, a learnout for that vehicle at this point.
I didn't even notice a fire up here.
Yeah.
Did it give her anybody else?
No, it was around Bailey and Peter and Kyle Hadwith, and David Pales saw the vehicle coming up and, and went down and saw the smoke. And that vehicle had turned around in the road right there, so they've got a description of the vehicle and.
Oh, I know, I just, I turned my phone back up out of church, and all of a sudden, ah, LaToya, we got another fire. I called Kyle, he don't go, I swear, I got, yeah, I got it right here. Course, he was, his wells are all up here, he might have a long Osage, you know, just, I'm sorry folks, as part of this county, you can't get things. And then he can bounce for down by Alley, when you go over that little, that hill, south, southwest Alley, and you were at, it's just, you're about to go work.
Yeah, that's it.
No.
Which is probably a good thing about, apart from that, so she couldn't bring herself down.
Yeah, how old is she? Gotta be her nineties, ain't she?
Yeah.
There's one kid's about my age. I didn't think she should live down there, I'd go back in there with data.
They just been in the pale lessons there, Austin, this week, and I just think that house was so huge.
Yeah, I know. Second.
All favor.
I have a lot of emails today.
Burn van, a moving, continued in burn van.
Would you like to second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Uh, do you want for a week or two weeks?
I was sitting here thinking.
I mean, I still put it on. Look at me, I seconded, I told you, I go.
Let go two weeks.
It'll rain Friday.
I only if it doesn't, we'll take it off my, we can all do that.
I'm just teasing.
Yeah, I know you.
Way it's going, I was, yeah, I was just doing it for six months or whatever, it'd be nice if we could, you know what?
Well, it needs to rain.
It will, when the stars won't quit.
The month of May, it is supposed to be extremely wet.
Well, that'll be a miracle.
That's a USDA report.
In southeastern Oklahoma.
Well, that may be true.
They're starting on their house, so it'll start being wet with them trucks.
Well, that's, that might be.
They got the metal up, they couldn't, they were supposed to put the windows and the doors in Friday, and it was too windy.
They got, they got the red steel up.
They got the red steel up.
Well, hope all of our fields don't float away, if we're gonna be that wet.
Or what?
Fields float away.
That leaves them trouble to go to, they had to shut down all the.
Too much rain, numb up?
They put a little tin on it morning.
Oh, I would, that would have been crazy.
And it was bad, they, they shut down at noon and.
Yeah, I stopped by one day, so we probably won't do much more work.
Did he build a barn for Dale over there?
If you give me your email, I send you.
No, I don't think so. That's a nice building, yeah, yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
Destination type places that I got.
Detention transportation claims.
Share that information or whatnot.
There's two claims here to do what you want with it, but I thought I'd share it. Does Jay have to sign the two claims here?
Do you just give me your email?
I'm gonna give you my personal, cause off the top of my head. For our, our few little kids.
Whatever, doesn't matter to me.
Or I can give you a business card when I come back.
That's mine too, that'll work.
I'll put this away and I'll go work on the bills that he's interested in toward.
You say they got a tip up on their house?
I think they have.
Cause he sent me something about.
Oh, they're going to reimburse us, this amount.
We don't have to do that, but.
She quit doing it a long time ago, cause they quit reimbursing, but she got a letter. That's, that's right.
Okay, I do, I'll send it to you, I do have.
Yeah, they're gonna pay us, yeah.
No, they're not gonna pay us.
Business card, no.
No, no, it's okay.
Stacks broke, they're not gonna pay us.
They put it on, except for I've used two. I know stacks broke. Since Christmas. Me and Christina will talk about that, but the teachers, I didn't understand, they take, they take away so long, I said, I know, it's a hundred and twenty million away from us commissioners, so.
Yeah.
That has my cell. Supposedly they are, I haven't heard today.
I'll, I'll drop the business card.
I quit getting on the Facebook, the phone bill will be high, but I gotta see the pictures of fires and.
It's very possible, Brian, I've got your emails.
A move we accept a detention transportation claim.
All circuit.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
This is what Fort Donna's always done, they've never, they stopped reimbursing us a long time ago, but she did get a letter that we needed to, um, send it in, so this is for the, um, uh, there's no place.
It's exemption.
Oh, yeah, exemption.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's two copies here, one copy for her to keep, and there's just one signature, so down there on the very bottom, Jay was supposed to claim that.
So we're probably not gonna get it.
We're not gonna get it still, but they did send out a letter telling us.
Twenty-four hundred something, maybe we'll get it. They'll steal it from the teachers, and they'll be screaming again.
I don't think anybody filed against me.
Forty-four, forty-six?
No.
Forty-eight, maybe they.
I was thinking.
Be nice for you.
No, they didn't, nobody filed against you. Ethan Baker puts that in there, don't put Alphala County in there.
All of you guys in there.
I know.
So Newton's deal is two years, what about Peterson?
Newton's deals, Newton's just two years?
Two years, or is it two years, ten years, or four years?
Yeah.
So how many terms can they do though, how many terms can they do though?
Uh, I think they can do twelve years, yeah.
Oh, I know twelve or.
Got a tiny one of these, right?
Yes, yeah, we'll keep an original, she'll send an original back.
Four and what's done in sixteen, so.
Carl, be good. I mean, you know. Hey, my. Hey, my role is to be two votes.
A move we accept the home state of California for.
All circuit.
All favor.
Aye.
Any unforeseen business. Move we turn, second, all favor.
All right.